I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. In keeping with the SES vision for arts education as being vital for college career and life readiness, tonight's Spotlight on the Arts will feature students from the Shelby County Class Piano Program and Scholastic Art National Gold Medal winners. First, the class piano program celebrating its 88th year of operation in the district is a tuition-based group instruction program that serves 19 schools with after-school group piano instruction beginning in the second grade. It has been in existence since 1930 and is the oldest continuing piano program in the U.S. This year's Class Piano All-City 2018 Concert with the theme "Around the World: 88 Years, 88 Keys" will be held at 7:00 PM, April 12th, at Colonial Middle School. And as always, it's free of charge and open to the public. Performing the All-City finale, he's got the world in his hands, will be Hannah Wong and Christina Wong from Germantown Middle School, piano teacher Ms. Donna Browning, along with Jada Thomas, Central High School, and Tyler Lewillen, Colonial Middle School, piano teacher Ms. Brenda Buford Shaw. Additional pre-meeting music performed by Julie Donaway, White Station High School, also a student, and Ms. Shaw. Please enjoy the whole world, he's got the whole world in his hands. Can you add an additional one? Thank you to the students and teachers of the Shelby County Schools Piano Program. We'd now like to present two 11th grade students from the White Station High School, along with their visual arts teacher, Charles Berlin. These students, Stephanie Wang and Shredar, um, Shredar Nowrahyin, both won national gold medals for drawing. They are invited to receive their awards at a ceremony this June in New York at Carnegie Hall. Their artwork is displayed on the screen. We'll take a moment to make sure that that happens. Oh, that's not gonna happen? Alright. Congratulations to these two talented artists and their art teacher. If they are present here tonight, if you could come forward. Thank you to all the students, teachers, and administrators for making this Spotlight on the Arts happen. Board members, if we could come forward and take a picture with them, please? Alright, and keep, we now will be able to recognize this evening accomplishments of our students and educators. Tonight's special recognition will be a little different from previous accomplishments, previous recognitions. I will read all of the recognized groups and their accomplishments together. Then the board members will take pictures with every group. Ms. Anthony will call those groups forward to take their photo. Our first group tonight is the Colonial Middle School Girls Basketball Team. They are the TMSAA West Tennessee Large School Sectional Champions. They have won the title of sectional state champions the past two years, making them back-to-back state champions in the girls' large middle school division. Their coach, Kevin Sanford, and the principal is Marquee Pfeiffer. Congratulations, Kevin Sanford, congratulations on another state championship. Go Vols, one of my alumni. Next, we will have the Bellevue Middle School Basketball Team. They are winners for the 2017-2018 TMSAA West Tennessee Small Divisional Sectional Champions. This is their four state title in a row, an unprecedented number of titles for middle school teams. This head coach is Mario, uh, Mr. Mario D. Taylor, and the principal is Mr. Kevin Malone. We are so proud of you, congratulations. If you'll come over to the right as well. And Bellevue, if you could come and stand up, we're gonna start taking picture, this way, I'm sorry, to the right, to my left, there, right. Okay. Um, Bellevue Middle School, if you can come up as well. Um, we will also recognize the Hamilton High School Basketball Team. Yes, I'm gonna. Colonial, um, Colonial, if you can also come up to the left, we're gonna take pictures with all of our fabulous team. We will recognize Hamilton High School Boys Basketball Team. The Wildcats were able to accomplish winning every championship title a team can win in the magical season. They finished the season undefeated and won the district tournament, county championship, regional championship, sectional championship, and culminated the season, winning the TSAA 16 AAA State Title. The head coach is Will Smith and the principal is Elvin Bell. Our final recognition for the night is the East High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team. The East High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team was ranked number one in the nation by MaxPreps. The Mustangs are the reigning 2017 TSAA Class 16 AAA State Champions. This year, Memphis East won their third consecutive state title. The team also achieved this distinction in 2016, winning a total of eight state championships. This is the highest number of championships held by any basketball team in Tennessee. Four East, for East basketball players made the All-Tournament Team this year. The head coaches, none other than Anfernee Hardaway, and the assistant coach was Javonte Holmes and Sorrell Valentine. The principal is Ms. Marilyn Hiller. We want to congratulate East Basketball Team. And last but not least, I want to also, in recognition of Women's History Month, we have the White Haven Girls Cheerleading Team. They competed. Girl power. They competed in the 2018 NCAA National Championship in Florida. They competed against high schools from across the country in the game day and advanced to non-tombling divisions. The team won first place in the medium high school game day timeout division and also won second place in the overall advanced non-tombling division. The head coach is Wynette Flowers and the principal is Dr. Vincent J. Hunter. So we'll have Colonial up first, and then we'll take subsequent pictures. Board members, if you could join me for pictures, please? There's a third one. Basketball Team who won TSTMSSA West Tennessee Sectional Championships. Principal Cory Williams and Coach Jarvis Stevens. Come on up, Brideway. Okay, was that a public comment or no? Okay, now we're moving to the question of the approval of the agenda. Superintendent, are there any, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We want to, uh, add, uh, an item for the sale of some vacant land at the South Area Office. Also want to pull items 11.8 and 11.11.
Are there any other amendments?
Yes.
Yes, Ms., uh?
I'd like to add a resolution, and I think that would be at the end, on the bayer.
Okay. We're adding a, uh, resolution from Board Member Jones? On bayer, mhm. Are there any other amendments? Mr., no, uh, Mr. Cornell, do you have an amendment to the agenda?
I've got a resolution to submit, and I talked to the chair about possibly that going into a committee for discussion, and it is regarding school scores.
Okay, and so does, make sure that board members have a copy of that as well.
Now, will we be reading that later?
Yeah, we'll be reading that later into the agenda. Seeing no other amendments, can we get a roll call vote?
Board Member Caldwell?
Aye.
Board Member Oracle? Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Jones? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
We have a quorum that the agenda passes. We're moving on to public comment. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for participation of a public at the meetings of local board educations. However, board policy provides that not more than 30 minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comments. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization he or she is representing, if any, and subject of the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about the school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel, names of persons connected to the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. The timer projected on the screen to your right, directly behind the board, will turn yellow 30 seconds when 30 seconds remaining. When you hear two bells, your time has expired. We have six speakers, there'll be three minutes each. The first is Terilyn McChristian. Please state your name and address and affiliation.
McChristian, I'm 4395 Revere Cove, Memphis, Tennessee. I'm a parent. I would like to speak as a parent on behalf of a gifted second grader about the purchasing of new science curriculum. Currently, the textbook my daughter and her classmates are using is 10 years old. Needless to say, I'm excited that the standards have changed and have changed for the better. The current textbook does not support the cognitive shifts for the new standards. For example, next year, the third grade students will be asked to explain natural hazards and then design feasible solutions. For this is a partial ask for the current fifth grade. Without purchasing a new curriculum that supports the shifts, and students will not be able to implement and show their understanding of the sci, of science on the new Ten Ready Science Assessment. By purchasing a new curriculum that is all-inclusive, the classrooms will become a richer environment where authentic learning takes place. Through specific science exploration, our teachers are then able to set our students on a more successful learning path for them to understand and engage with the world around them. As you ponder whether or not to purchase a curriculum for science, I want you to think of your family members and mine who are in the classroom lacking the proper and up-to-date curriculum program that will help ensure our students are able to be college and career-ready. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Alberta Tensek Jr., Albert, I'm sorry. Albert. Come on once, twice. Okay, we're gonna move on to Charles Scott, then Tequila Rucker, and then Lisa Jorgensen.
Charles Scott, 3689 Hookerberry Street, 38116. Here to speak with another update from the United Shelby County Council of PTA. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with three minutes this time. But basically, I hope you had the handouts that I passed to you. Again, just want to continue as always to give you an update. Chairman Avant, to the board members, Susan Hopsen, again, an update since the last meeting was here. I had an opportunity to read to the second grade, second grade class at the Chimney Rock Elementary's party, PTA Dr. Seuss birthday on March the 2nd. Also had the opportunity to attend the Middle College PTA Student Appreciation Day on March the 8th, which many of you were there as well. In addition to that, we continue to advocacy as we travel to Washington, DC on March the 13th to the 15th. There were many students there at that time as well. We're close to over 100 national PTA leaders from all across the country and from the Tennessee PTA to visit our Tennessee congressmen to advocate on behalf of school funding and for school safety. We had the opportunity to visit Congressman Steve Cohen, which many may say that may be an easy visit if you're a Democrat. But we also took opportunity to visit the other side of the aisle as well. We spent time with Representative-